Article 2, to elect a town clerk for a three-year term. This is a ballot vote if there is a contest. If not, the clerk can cast one ballot. The floor is not open for nominations for town clerk. Janet Long. Kim Grease has been nominated for town clerk. Larry? I see one on my hands. Is there other nominations for town clerk?
Mr. Moderator, I move the nomination cease and the clerk casts one ballot for Kim Grease.
Is there a second? A motion on the floor is that the nomination cease and that the clerk cast one ballot for Kim Grease to be your town clerk for three years. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say no. She is elected.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Article 3, to take action on the town of Greensboro annual printed report. This is, a motion would be in order to accept the town report?
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, so this, for discussion, this is, we don't, I guess we do feel it on this, but, okay. So we will talk about the town report. This is where you ask questions about what's in the town report, if there's any corrections. So go ahead, anybody have anything to discuss about it? Yes, John?
To compliment the team for putting together the best report ever.
John, I couldn't hear you.
It's like a thing. Can you hear me?
I think I saw him. McNeil or something?
There you go. Can you hear me? Just to compliment the team for putting the report together, it's the best report I've ever seen from the town in thirty years.
I'd like to say thanks for a lot of help that went into this town report.
Getting closer to the mic.
I'd like to say thanks for a lot of help that went into this year's town report. Jennifer Lucas and Eric Hanson were particularly helpful in this as well.
I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you.
I'd like to say thanks to a lot of help that went into this town report.
Hey, Tim, Tim, that mic isn't working, so we're gonna have to share yours onstage.
I'd like to say thanks for a lot of help that went into this year's town report, particularly from Jennifer Lucas, Eric Hanson, members of the select board, and all the reports that went into this as well. It really is a community venture, so thank you.
As far as committee members and, so tomorrow is our annual meeting to reappoint people, so if anybody is up for reappointment or if committee chairs have additions or changes, please let either the clerk or a select board member know before tomorrow evening. Sorry, I'll try not to. Dave is late, he's coming. Tracy, who, just so everyone knows, is not running again. She's up for election, she's mentioned it, and she's not here because she said she notified me this morning she had a cold. No work, there is... Okay, other comments on the town report? Okay, so I guess I asked for a motion, so I might still have a vote. Are you all in favor of accepting the annual Greensboro printed report? Say yes. Aye. Opposed? No? Good, okay. Usually, by tradition, we do a thing called the Greensboro Award, which is presented by the select board, so I will turn this over to whoever on the select board is gonna deal with that. It looks like Ellen.
Yeah, hi, my name's Ellen. This year, I just want to, well, anyway, I wrote something, 'cause otherwise I'll talk too long. This year's Greensboro Award recipient is Dan Predpahl for all his past and ongoing contributions to the town. Dan's work quietly on projects and many folks may be unaware of his commitment. After years of, after years of summer visits at Highland Lodge, Dan and Diane purchased their house and Dan dove into Greensboro Projects. His background as an engineer, professional training consultant, author, project developer, made Dan a capable, efficient leader, but it's his willingness and generous time commitments that really set him apart. In not all that many years, well, he's been a resident for quite a while, Dan has been involved with, with an often instrumental, and like, these are the following things he's been involved with. He worked, he worked as the chair of the planning commission and was responsible for putting together the last town plan, which I was a part of and so were several people here, and I don't know that it would have happened without him. His work coordinating and spearheading the community town evaluation that helped set up various committees, from wastewater to walking biking to the bend revitalization group. He also was a part of and helped spearhead setting up the housing survey, plan and evaluation assessment. And the most recent, he was responsible for developing the evaluation process for the town's ARCA funds committee. In the most recent years, he's been responsible for helping the Greensboro Bend Revitalization Group grow from a committee to become a nonprofit that's been working on economic development plan related to the rail trails, sorry, and plans for the bend, including writing grant applications requiring significant interactions with many entities and many community folks. We thank him for the many hundreds of hours of his expertise and resources, including applications, coordination of resources, and helping the town prioritize its developmental plans. I know he's not here, but I'm sure, you know, you know him best, what will you say? That's it, I mean, I think we all know that, I mean, those people that know Dan and have worked with him know how much he puts into his efforts, and I, I don't know what to say, but I'm really, you know, thank the select board for choosing to make this decision.
Okay, at some point in the meeting, probably sometime around eleven o'clock, Catherine Sims, our representative, will be here, and so we'll just kind of pause at an appropriate time and let her speak to the audience, if that's okay? We also expect to have a guest from Rural Edge, who is here now, okay, who will be speaking to us about a project. This might be an appropriate time for that? You guys good for that? Okay, so before we continue, we will, I'll give this to Peter.
I'll just give a brief introduction, this is Patrick Shattuck from Rural Edge, and we've been struggling with what to do with Town Hall for a few years, knowing that the school was leaving, and I think this is probably the third winter they have not been there. Probably a lot of people understand that Wonder Arts has used the building, but there, this, that's kind of an ongoing thing, and the original agreement has changed, so Rural Arts has approached us about, excuse me, Rural Edge has approached us about reconfiguring the building into housing. So currently, you know, we are heating and maintaining the entire building, and basically the town uses the office. And the building needs significant upgrades, and so I asked Patrick to come today and just give us a little overview of what is potential there.
Okay, Patrick, would you like to come up? This is nothing that we're gonna vote on or make in binding, this is only information
Good morning, I'm Patrick Shattuck, I'm the executive director of Rural Edge. For those of you unfamiliar with Rural Edge, we are the designated housing and community development organization serving the Northeast Kingdom. And we've been working, we were actually approached by a group here in Greensboro a little over three years ago. Ellen was part of it, housing group. You mentioned the housing survey, it sort of formed out of that. Leadership from, from local residents, we met with the planning commission about the need for real housing options. You know, people are talking a lot about housing, and those of us in housing say, "Housing is finally having its moment." But as an organization that serves the people of the Northeast Kingdom, we feel that that, that effort needs to come from the local community, and we are there to help when there is an opportunity. So we've had ongoing discussions, and of course you have got a great community, you've got growing businesses, but you've got some challenges. Real estate here is expensive. You've got a beautiful, desirable community. Our work takes time and planning, and we've had lots of conversations over three years as to how to do that. Now that people are saying affordable housing, we need workforce housing, we're actually framing this as modest income rental housing. And I think that that terminology really speaks to Vermont and the folks who live in Vermont. They're folks who are living modestly, within their means, and just need a way to stay in their community in safe, affordable housing where they can thrive. And that is what we're looking at, and what we've been searching for sites for, and we've had some discussions and haven't been able to come to terms with, with property owners to do some feasibility analysis. So in November, I believe, had an email, would we be willing to look and, and give our feedback on the current town offices? And our staff went out, and we do a lot of, of work and evaluation of buildings, and I've got copies of our last annual report that I'll make available for folks, but if you're familiar with St. Johnsberry, we did the renovation of New Avenue at the corner of Railroad and Eastern Avenue, so we're familiar with historic anchor buildings and how to turn, return those to, to active use and really make them a sustainable, contributing part of the community. And so as we toured your town offices, you know, my background is in architecture and historic preservation, so I was immediately charged by lots of the features. Those same features make it a really difficult project to pull off and adaptive reuse, and we know you've been struggling, there's accessibility, how do you deal with efficiency, balance all the needs of the building, and make sure that it's not only preserved as an important anchor of your community, that visible location, but that it creates a real service to the community. And so we were asked, you know, when I said, "Yeah, I think it adapts really well," if we would put together a proposal. And so what I sent to the, the select board was, was, you know, a very open-ended proposal. We would love to do a feasibility analysis, and frankly, that feasibility analysis cost probably about twenty-five thousand dollars, and we would come up with, with those funds to do design analysis, some schematic design, look at market, what, what actually fits the community the best so that it would be sustainable. We've had conversations with the housing committee about, you know, the fact that when you look at demographics, Greensboro's elderly population actually have incomes below the rest of the elderly population in Orleans County. So, but yet we have folks who are coming, new jobs being created in Greensboro and no place for those workers and their young families to live. So how do we design some rental housing that has accessible and adaptable units but serves a wide mix so that we create a vibrant hub to, to serve the folks who live in Greensboro and help house those who may be coming here to work? So our feasibility analysis would look at all of that, it would look at environmental considerations, historic preservation considerations, wastewater disposal considerations, and, and to do that, what we would look for is we would look for an option agreement with the town, which basically means that while we're investing this money, to look at it, that they would not have discussions with, with anyone else. Because really what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring to fruition what the housing committee and the planning commission and their development of the town plan identified as, as a need. And it's complex work we do, and that's why I'm so excited that so many of you are here and so many of you are interested in your community and that you wanted to have this discussion, because it is so important to the continued vibrancy of all of our communities. I'm happy to take any questions if folks have them.
Got a question way upstairs.
Just a question, are you gonna be here for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah, I plan to stay here for the whole meeting, and I've got, got records for folks.
I don't have to run down and talk to you.
Okay. Good, thank you very much.
Could you speak to the scope of the feasibility study? Would it determine like number of units?
What, what we would do is it would evaluate the building, you know, as we've had discussions with, with the housing committee, there's sort of a general outline of what makes for a feasible project, so we'd be looking at about twenty units probably. Those all could be accommodated in that building as it stands, but how do we both respect the historic character and add units? You know, we would, we would be developing bedroom mix and accessible unit mix based on what's identified in the actual market study that, that actually looks at Greensboro and its immediate service area. You know, we'd be looking at all, we'd be doing a phase one environmental review, so that would include lead and asbestos testing for, for the building as well as PCD testing, you know, appraisal, capital needs assessment, so to evaluate the building currently. It would also include architectural and historic preservation and engineering analysis, so that we're really looking at the entire building, what it can, can accommodate, as well as the market and making sure that we create a feasible and viable proposal.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually I have a comment. So I, Tim Brennan from Greensboro, I serve on the board of Rural Arts Collaborative, which was Wonder Arts, and, you know, we've been looking at that building and had an option to develop it for the three years I've been on the board, and the board came to the conclusion that we just did not have the capability to do it in the right way. And so we are very supportive of this proposal, I think it's, and speaking for myself, I think having more moderate income housing in our community is really needed, so I think this is a terrific development.
Any other comments? Nancy?
I want to support it too, it would be over, it would take a while for the whole town here.
People can't hear you.
It would take a while for people to defer to happen, it won't take...
We need to have a microphone, where is she?
I, I think your point is that this is a long process, and so to give an idea of the timeline, we've asked for sort of a one-year option agreement, that is when we would be doing our feasibility work. At that time, we would begin applying for funding. Generally, the funding process, you start getting funding and at that point you start doing your, assuming everything proves feasible, you do your architectural work for bid documents, so that's about another year while you assemble funds and go out to bid, and then you're looking at another year of construction. So if we were to sign an agreement right now, you know, we're probably looking at occupancy in early 2026, at, at this point.
Okay, Patrick will be around for the rest of the meeting if you wish to discuss this with him.
Ken Johnston.
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry.
Are the other, are the, Ken Johnston, are there other uses of the building that have been considered?
We don't, we don't have any current proposals.
Okay, shall we move on? Okay, another guest I see leaning up against the back wall is our sheriff, Jennifer Harlow. Would you like to say anything, Jennifer? Does anybody like to hear from her?
Yeah.
Trying to think of some wise comment to make, but it's a good way to hear from the sheriff.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I must say, this is a pretty impressive turnout. I've gone to a lot of town meetings over the years, and I've got a couple more to go to today, and this is by far the highest number, so it's great to see. So my name's Jennifer Harlow and I'm your sheriff. I really appreciate our community support for myself and my department, it's great, and we have thoroughly enjoyed working down here and hope to continue to do so. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, I'm, I'm available pretty much all the time, so if you don't want to come and speak to me today, you're happy to come in. Call me or stop by the office at any point in time if you have any questions or concerns. Crickets, that's good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You gonna be around for a few minutes?
I am, yes.
Okay, yeah, so if you wanna speak in public, you can go find your... Okay, are we ready to move on? Article four, shall the voters of the town of Greensboro authorize property tax exemption for the ball field property identified as parcel ID 005-0002 for a three-year period? This will eliminate the municipal property tax due, however, the amount due for education taxes will still need to be raised and will be included in our local agreement rate. Janet?
I hope that we authorize the tax exemption for the ball field.
As written?
As written.
Okay, Janet is moving the article as presented, is there a second? Is there a discussion?
There's a second. What is the local agreement?
Who was the second on that?
I had a question, what is the local agreement?
Okay. Mike's second, the question was, what is the local agreement? Is that correct? What does the local agreement rate? Okay, answer.
The local agreement changes, we authorize veterans to get a deduction, the town voted a forty thousand dollar deduction off veterans, and so that's part of the local agreement. Usually it's point zero 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 two percent on the tax rate. So that covers the veterans exemption as well as the ball field. So it's, it's reminding what taxpayers pay to cover this.
Okay, any other questions on Article four? Okay, ready for the question? Shall the voters of the town of Greensboro authorize property tax exemption for the ball field property identified as property ID 005-0002 for a three-year period? This will eliminate the municipal property tax due, however, the amount due for education taxes will still need to be raised and will be included in our local agreement rate. If you're in favor, you'll say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, you'll say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article five, okay, here's where we get into the elections. The first office is a two-year term for select board, a ballot vote, so should there be a contest, we will forward ballots. Oh, okay, excuse me, yours it says three years?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we are gonna do a three-year select board position first. Janet?
I nominate Eric Hanson.
The name of Eric Hanson has been forwarded. Eric, are you here? Would you accept?
Yes.
Okay, is there other nominations for select board for three years? Seeing none, it would be appropriate for...
I move, Mr. Moderator, I move that the nomination cease and the clerk cast one ballot for Eric Hanson.
For select board for three years? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, so the motion on the floor is that the nominations for select board for three years cease and that Eric Hanson be elected by one ballot? Prepared by, prepared by the town first. If you're in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
Next, next office is...
Could we have Eric speak to why he's run?
After the fact?
That's pretty direct. My wife and I, my wife, Shin Yung, and I moved to Greensboro two years ago from Burlington. We wanted to retire to Vermont, Burlington's close to Vermont, not Vermont, but we thoroughly enjoyed living here year-round, and I've participated many years on boards, et cetera, in the Burlington area, and want to do the same here. My wife was down at the library and somebody said, "If Eric is elected to the select board, you won't see him for three years." She got home and she told me she hoped my candidacy would be very successful.
That's a, that's a hard act to follow. Okay, next office is out of, a select board member for two years. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Peter Romans. I nominate Peter Romans.
Second.
Are there other nominations for a select board member two years? I see none.
Mr. Moderator, does the usual motion suffice?
No.
Okay, I move that the nomination cease and the clerk cast one ballot for Peter Romans. For two-year terms, it's likely.
Is there a second? Janet's seconding it. So, all of, is there, no discussion on that? All in favor of this town clerk casting one ballot for Peter Romans for two-year term as select board member? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. You've elected him, congratulations, Peter. Next office on my list says cemetery commissioner. Says three hours. Says three hours? That was a typo. I think it's supposed to say three years.
Nominate McNeil.
Wayne has nominated McNeil as your cemetery commissioner for three years?
I'll second that.
Seconded. This is not a ballot vote. Other nominations for cemetery commissioner? Seeing none, all in favor of McNeil being cemetery commissioner for three years, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Very good, selected. Okay, here comes my favorite, library trustee. Now, we have two to elect, they're three-year terms. Virginia?
Yes, I would like to nominate Sharon Putney and Rose Modery as a slate, both of them date out for your term.
You're suggesting a slate of two people? And the names are Rose Modery and...
Sharon Putney.
Would both of those individuals accept?
Yes.
Rose said yes, is Sharon here? You said yes, okay. Are there other nominations? At this point, we're voting for a slate of two, but if there's a third person that wants to jump in, we'll change this up a little bit. I don't see any. All in favor of Rose and Sharon as being your library trustee for three years? You say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, you've elected them both. Historically, we've taken a long time to do this. Okay, collector of delinquent taxes, a one-year term ballot vote.
I nominate Janet Long.
Janet Long is nominated. Judy? Janet?
I'm the only one that doesn't give a three-year term.
There's a reason for that. Other nominations for collector of delinquent taxes? This is a ballot vote.
I hope that the clerk cast one ballot for Janet Long.
For a one-year term. Okay, the motion on... Is there a second? The motion on the floor is that the clerk cast one ballot for Janet Long as being your collector of delinquent taxes, a one-year term. If you're in favor, please say aye. As opposed, say no. She's elected. Okay, that's it for the elections. I hope we have more? Well, not on my list. What do you got? Okay, there's two more, which are the school directors. But those are going to be voted, those are voted on. Okay, on page seven of your town report, you'll notice that there's two-year terms for the Orleans Southwest Unified Elementary School Director. Those were voted on at the annual meeting last week. Okay, so those were voted on last week in an open meeting. And there's reminder that the polls will open in 25 minutes for the school budgets out in the lobby. Okay, now we get into appropriations. Shall the voters of the town of Greensboro appropriate the following sums to the outside agencies listed below? And the motion would be in order to accept this as a positive, and then a second. Is there a motion? Kim has made a motion to accept it, and is there a second? Okay, that's Janet. So now we will discuss each one of these individually, and we can amend this up or down, each one individually. Then when we're all through, if we're all done, we'll vote the final total, okay? First one, Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging, a $1,000 appropriation. And this is where you ask questions, what do these guys do? That type of thing? Okay, there is a pamphlet outside that explains it. Nomi? Use the mic.
I just wanted to ask a question generally about how the appropriations come to be on this list. And just, because I was looking at ours compared to a lot of other towns. I was curious as to how organizations know about it, get on the list, and how those sums are determined. Our appropriations are about double surrounding towns.
Our appropriations are, they sent written requests generally by December that they are requesting funds from the town. And they will tell us whether it's up or down. Most of them have been on for years. You'll see later on, there's two other appropriation requests. And if anybody wants to add an appropriation from the town that has not been on our appropriation list in the past, then they have to submit a petition signed by 5% of the voting population, and that varies, you know, sometimes daily. So there has to be a 5%, so it's about 32 right now, about 32, 35 voters. But the petition has got to be sent in, and so those that you see are coming, they're worded exactly the way the petition sends it forward to us. And it's, they're voted on separately for the initial request. And like, so then they're voted on. Like, these two new ones that are coming, if they're approved, then they will be put in that chart as well, and it will be included in that. But they have to submit a petition signed by voters, and they have to be registered voters in town, not just taxpayers. And they submit that in time for it to go on the warning, which is December.
And then after that, they request an amount?
And after that, every year, then they will send us a request for what they want. The same amount, some of these ask for a higher amount. So that's how it's done. They just change the amount, but it's, so it's put for discussion here. But the initial one is separate, and then it's put before, but they do send us a request every year to be voted on.
Okay, the first one is Northeast Kingdom on Aging, Council on Aging, $1,000 appropriation. I don't see any hands, I'm just going to run down through these. Aware, $2,000 appropriation. There is supporting documents out in the lobby for every one of these, I believe. Calabonia Home Health, $1,400. Clarina Howard Nichols Center, $1,500. Crossbury Community Care Center, $10,500. Four Seasons on Early Learning, $9,500. Green Up, $100. Greensboro Nursing Home, $24,000. Nomi?
Is this sum in addition to the ARPA forms that's the town?
It's just the, it's just the... This has nothing to do with ARPA at all. This is just the appropriation request.
Hard Carry Fruit Battery, $2,500. LaMoyale Family Center, $1,000. Northeast Kingdom Human Services, $1,000. I'm sorry? Northeast Kingdom?
In the book that we received, it reads H-E-K to services.
Appears to be a typo.
Sorry, my typo. Apologize.
The amount is different also. Okay, I better be using this rather than this. Yeah, I'll get rid of this, okay. I'll go back and be on the same page as you guys are. Thank you, Laurlee. Okay, so it's Northeast Kingdom Human Services, $1,524.
That's A-E-K, Verbing Services.
I'm sorry. Okay, let me back up. Yeah, H-E-K should stay, say, N-E-K, Northeast Kingdom. And it's Human Services, and the value is $1,524. Do we all agree? Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am? I did that one. But thanks for keeping me on my toes. Hard to do these days. Okay, next one is Northeast Kingdom Learning Services, $300. And the next is, I'm sorry?
If you would explain what the N-E-K Human Services is?
Well, I can't, but I'll give it to somebody who can.
N-E-K Learning Services help, Human Services, sorry about that. They help disabled people around getting jobs. We had a young man that helped us in the giving closet and recycling for years. And so they just help position, challenge people with positions, jobs, homes that suit their needs.
Thank you.
Okay. Cheryl? Carol, I'm sorry.
N-E-K Human Services is also our primary provider of mental health services across this region. And it is a very well-utilized organization.
Okay, thank you, Carol. See, we did, Learning Services, okay. North Country Animal League, $600. NVDA, that's the Northeast Vermont Development Association, $572. Orleans County Historical Society, $700. Orleans County Citizens Advocacy, $800. NECKA Community Justice, is that correct? $300. Red Cross, $250. Hardback Rescue Squad, $22,300. Rural Community Transportation, RCT, $900. Vermont Center for Independent Living, $210. Wonder Arts, $3,500. Nancy?
I would love to have somebody talk about what that money's going to go to.
Anybody here from Northeast, from Wonder Arts that can explain the $3,500 appropriation? Tim? He's coming. Tim, put your hand up.
Well, I could go on about what we do, but yeah, Tim, I serve on the board and treasurer of Rural Arts Collaborative, which by the way, that's the legal name now. Wonder Arts is a part of Rural Arts Collaborative. But so it just goes into the general budget. We provide all kinds of arts events and classes for children, for adults. Everybody was, you know, we've done events here with the Highland Arts Center. So it's part of the overall budget of the organization, which is about $300,000 a year. And we appreciate very much the support of the town.
Laurlee?
Rural Arts Collaborative has also partnered with OSSU to try to get after-school programming back in fours. Right now, they have programs at Crasberry that any kid in the district could go to.
Did you guys hear this over? Nancy?
I guess I'm going to jump out on the cliff and say I'm concerned about giving the money and not having any after-school program in Greensboro this last year, and perhaps maybe next year. My concern? Could you hear me?
People aren't hearing you.
Okay, my concern is that... Can you not repeat, Tim?
I can hear you, but these folks underneath you.
Could you repeat, could you repeat what I said?
Okay, all right, so say it.
My concern...
My concern?
Is that this past year, we did not have any...
That this past year, we did not have any?
After-school programs.
After-school programs in?
Greensboro.
In Greensboro.
And my concern is to want to encourage that we have that happen from now on.
And she would like to encourage that after-school programs happen from now on, is that correct?
In Greensboro.
In Greensboro.
Along with the other counties, but not forget us.
Not to forget Greensboro. So that was her comment. Laurlee?
I don't want to hide you about it, but Virginia LaPierre can speak more to this as the site coordinator for Crasberry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just wanted to be clear, first of all, that Wonder Arts is more than looking at just, or Rural Arts is more than just providing after-school care. The mission of Rural Arts Collaborative is to create a vibrant Northeast Kingdom, supporting our youth, supporting our artists, and really trying to make the Northeast Kingdom a place where people can thrive and stay and work and not have to leave to pursue other avenues of employment. We are working with OSSU to create an entirely new structure for providing after-school care that includes summer care as well. And it is a massive undertaking to restructure what has been a decade-long program that eventually unfolded on itself. So we have restructured the responsibilities to try to take some of the heavy lift off of the schoolteachers and those that were running the individual sites. And so I'd like to say, we're working on it, see, I promise you. But don't let the lack of after-school at the Lakeview Site or the Green Forest Site discourage you from supporting Wonder Arts, because it is supporting a lot of other initiatives in our community, and it's really an important service. I'd also like to say that there is transportation money available for those in the other towns to be transported to the after-school sites that are currently offered, which currently is only Crasberry. But we have secured funding for this summer to run a camp and for next fall. So we will be expanding our services as, in a sustainable way, so that we don't promise more than we can deliver.
Further comments on Rural Arts Collaborative listing as Wonder Arts? Yes?
Yeah, William Laurlee?
Here we go.
I would like to confirm, if possible, that this appropriation is going to Rural Arts Collaborative, which could then be shared amongst the organizations underneath that umbrella, or specifically Wonder Arts, and just appropriate to that program?
Who can answer that question? As written, it says, "Wonder Arts."
We probably should amend that to, this went out with Wonder Arts. Probably it should be amended to Rural Arts, that is the umbrella program.
Yeah, I guess I would just say if the town wishes to make it restricted to Wonder Arts, the town should do that.
Is there a preference?
Well, like with almost every nonprofit, the preference is always to have flexibility. But the programs were very well-described by our staff member, which I appreciate. Thank you, no more than I do. So it's not going to really make a difference. We're going to deliver the programs exactly as it was described.
Laurlee? Look, it's right there.
Years ago, we had a program here for senior partners, and $3,500 were put in as a request to support that program. And it's since been enrolled in a lot of other programs. To my question as to Rural Arts, what are you providing to seniors in our area? The senior partners have been provided outings and lunches and ways to get out and there without their family having to take them. From this moment on, Rural Arts has been mine for seniors in our area.
Who would like to address that?
Beth Netchum, I'm a teaching artist for Rural Arts Collaborative. And we are in the process of developing a couple of programs specifically for seniors. One is an inclusive program, and the other would be an opportunity to bring seniors together or create experiences. I would, and we're open to feedback on what seniors are really looking for. I'd also like to emphasize that in Greensboro, we offer and will be expanding our summer camp program, which Virginia referenced. And this camp is free to children who go to school during Greensboro. And, um, so part of the support that we give to Rural Arts is to support some of this type of program that brings and supports community. Thank you.
Further discussion of Wonder Arts? Okay, we're gonna move on to VCRD, which I'm told stands for Vermont Council on Rural Development. An appropriation of $500. And these are the folks that were here a few years ago, did the community study, I believe, is that correct? Yep. Okay, so we've been through and had some discussion on this entire list. We can go back and change any of these that you may wish, up or down, um, yes?
Yeah, my name is Jack Fetter. I just had a question about, if you want to remind the Development Association what that is exactly.
NVDA does everything for us, basically. I mean, they do, it's a planning, the regional planning, I mean, that is, they're, um, invaluable to the town resources.
Are there birds?
Yeah. There, yeah.
I do hear birds.
You're working on it.
Something's coming, tweet, tweet, okay. I guess they'll be able to find out pretty quickly. Birds do eat. Mike?
If the NVDA could use this one.
No, it is, yes, it is.
NVDA is the Regional Development Agency and it's, every time we have to go put together a new town plan or get resources as we're rewriting the zoning bylaws, NVDA is a very helpful resource in that process. It also, there's a committee of NVDA that reviews town plans for all the towns in the Northeast Kingdom, the three counties, which enables, and Greensboro's town plan has been endorsed, that enables Greens, the town of Greensboro in, for some grants, it enables citizens to apply for grant funding from either the federal government or the state government. But those are all things that are done by the Regional Planning and Development Agency, which is NVDA.
Thank you, buddy. It's possible maybe that that might, that the carry might have been the problem.
I couldn't hear what that was. Okay, here's, okay, Jim Fetter.
Is that a government agency or not? Is, what is the funding company? Go ahead.
Mike?
The state does appropriate money in the state budget as well as the various member towns. Greensboro's been a member since the early 1950s. I think 1951 is when NVDA was formed. Greensboro is, and the amount, I think it's $572 this year. Every few years, it goes up by $60 or so, but it's been very, very stable for a very long time. But yes, it gets both state money and money from the member towns.
Okay, are there questions concerning, nobody? Good job, Louis.
Can somebody here speak to what the funds for the Greensboro Community Care Center, are the new support? Or are they pretty much?
Yep, right behind you.
I, I'm full of others to Craftsbury.
You can't hear me. You have to hold it this way. Don't hold it like this, hold it like this.
Hold it towards the left.
Not like this, like this.
Very good, okay, Bill Rider's for Greensboro Nursing Home. Yeah, the appropriation we ask for every year, it balances off the property taxes because there's no legal way for the town to waive our taxes.
Jenna?
Uh, the appropriation to the Craftsbury Community Care Center, is it bad guys or dollars?
But the birds are going.
It's used to supplement Medicare payments. And Craftsbury Community Care Center is obliged to take on 10 or 11 or 12 Medicare patients. And, but Medicaid, excuse me, Medicaid. So this, this helps supplement what it really costs for a person to be there.
More discussion of appropriations, yes?
Yeah, so this is just a general question. For those people that are voting and are not able to vote on these people or non- voted items, is there an opportunity for them to do that or typically does the town be, is this the end of the voting base?
Because we're a floor of vote, this is it. In the past, the past couple of years, we did do an Australian ballot because of COVID, but we're back too. And this is, you guys are voting on the budgets.
But is there any, I'm just out of curiosity, because the town being exists in, you know, basically, I know there are some, some special differences in terms of date, but because the dates coincide across the state, has there ever been a movement to make a state holiday so that people can then participate as a much larger, wider community?
It is a state holiday.
Oh, it is?
Yes, we have, yeah, it is, we, our, the town's, um, vacation schedule goes through the state holidays and today is actually.
So, but private organizations would use to work, be there, work here?
Absolutely.
Okay, further discussion on appropriations, which is Article Six. We have not amended any of these up or down. Now, now's your chance to do that. I don't see any, so I will read down the list one time. Appropriation lists are as follows: Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging, $1,000. Aware, $2,000. Caldonia Home Health, $1,400. Clarina Howard Nichols Center, $1,500. Craftsbury Community Care Center, $10,500. Four Seasons of Early Learning, $9,500. Greena, $100. Greensboro Nursing Home, $24,000. Hardwick Area Food Pantry, $2,500. Lemoyle Family Center, $1,000. Northeast Kingdom Human Services, $1,524. Northeast Kingdom Learning Services, $300. North Country Animal League, $600. NVDA, $572. Orleans County Historical Society, $700. Orleans County Citizens Advocacy, $800. NECKA Community Justice, $300. Red Cross, $250. Rescue Squad, $22,300. Rural Community Transportation, $900. Vermont Center for Independent Living, $210. Wonder Arts, $3,500. VCRD, $500. Totalling $85,956. Anyone who would make any amendments to any of these? Seeing not? All in favor of the article as read will say aye.
Aye.
Close the polls will say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Sevens, shall the town of Greensboro vote to appropriate a sum of $750 for the support of Salvation Farms to provide services to residents of the town? Moved by Janet Lowen, seconded by. By Judy Carpenter. Discussion? Janet, would you want to speak to this? You need to speak to this first? You don't have to, okay. Yeah, so the procedure is whoever makes the motion has a right to speak first, that's why I just did that. So, here we go.
Good morning, can you hear me okay? So, uh, my name is Teresa Snow and I am the Executive Director of Salvation Farms. Okay, um, so my name is Teresa Snow and I'm the Executive Director of Salvation Farms. We're a non-profit based in Morrisville. I also wrote these down because I think they're off track. Salvation Farms is seeking first-time support from the town of Greensboro, a total advocacy of $750. So we wanna thank the town for considering this request. Salvation Farms is best known in the Lemoyle Valley for its cleaning work. This involves working closely with farms, organizing volunteers, collecting surplus crops for each side of the valley's farms for distribution of community programs in the valley. These surplus crops are edible and nutritious, but for one reason or another, are not made into market. Now, the numbers are slightly different than what typically appears in your town report. But in total, last year, 2022, Salvation Farms collected more than 82,000 pounds of surplus crops. That's approximately 250,000 servings of, as I said, surplus crops from farms in the Northeast. Four counties of Vermont. We worked with dozens of farms and distributed this locally grown surplus to dozens of these programs with a helping more than 180 volunteers who contributed 750 hours combined. So by the end of last year, Salvation Farms had delivered more than 23,000 pounds, that's more than 70,000 servings of surplus crops to both food programs that likely serve residents of Greensboro. Those sites included Craftsbury Community Care Center, Four Seasons Early Learning, Greensboro Free Library, Greensboro Nursing Home, the Hardwick Area Food Pantry, and Hardwick, Craftsbury, and Altoni. Head Start in Hardwick, which is part of the Northeast Kingdom Community Action Agency, Lemoyle Health Partners, Lemoyle Community Food Share based in Morseville, Lemoyle County Mental Health Services, which has a food shop also based in Morseville, Saplings Community Children's Center, and the Given Closet. Our budget is just over $900,000. Our cleaning work costs us just under $300,000. And we also produce and distribute frozen foods and we pay our staff to attend time of year.
Thanks Teresa. See you, Carl.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank Teresa, I've been hearing what she started. And she's done a fantastic job in this place.
Okay, any other questions, Article Seven, yes?
I'd like to support Teresa. I worked with her years and years ago when I was able to glean off the peaks at seven in the morning, um, on Sunday mornings, I went to church in my jeans. I did resign from, uh, gleaning after the turnips, um, at Riverside Farm got a little heavy to load onto the truck. This is an incredible organization. I hate wasted food. And this organization, for years and years, has found ways to recycle products that cannot be sold on a market, but can be given to the communities in the Northeast Kingdom.
Any other comments on this? You ready for the question? Question is, shall the town of Greensboro vote to appropriate a sum of $750 for the support of Salvation Farms to provide services to residents of the town? If you are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? The ayes appear to have it, congratulations. Article Eight, shall the town of Greensboro vote to appropriate and expand the sum of $500 for the support of Craftsbury Saplings, a nonprofit childcare center located in Craftsbury that provides services to the residents of the town of Greensboro? Motion? Moved by Judy, seconded by. By Bobby. Okay, anybody like to speak to this? Judy?
Well, to support you, is that I am a part-time employee of Saplings. Saplings, you know, we have the Four Seasons of Early Learning. Is it not working? No.
Pull your mask down, Jenny.
Got it?
There you go.
Alright, so I'm a part-time employee of Saplings. Given that the situation in this country with limited childcare and very few childcare workers, we are in a very fortunate position in Greensboro of having access to two excellent childcare centers and preschools. There are Greensboro kids who attend Saplings, which is on the town, a side of town far away from the bend. And Saplings is working hard, in addition to its regular programming, to try to raise funds to build a bigger center to also take care of infants in the future. So I would recommend that the town support this.
Saplings, anybody else? Ready for the question, which is? Article Eight, shall the town of Greensboro vote to appropriate and spend, expand a sum of $500 for the support of Craftsbury Saplings, a nonprofit childcare center located in Craftsbury that provides services to the residents of the town of Greensboro? If you are in favor of that appropriation, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Say no? It has passed. Article Nine, shall the town of Greensboro approve the following special appropriation requests from the municipal properties listed below? And as we did in Article Six, we'll discuss these individually. I'd like to have a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept.
Motion. Yep, by Jennifer, excuse me, yep, seconded?
Seconded.
By Mike, okay. Greensboro Conservation. I should lighten it. $3,000. The question was, is this the Greensboro Conservation Commission? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the answer was yes. Greensboro Free Library, $40,000. Larry? Okay. Louis is coming to, you can say that all over again.
Could someone update us on what they done last year? I'm all from Greensboro, I live here.
So, are you speaking about the conservation or are you speaking about the library?
Conservation.
Okay, so you'd like an update on what they did last year? Is that correct? Okay, can somebody from the Conservation Commission address that? David? Okay, Clive?
Okay, I'm, I'm usually tired.
Nancy, that's not working very well.
This way, okay.
That's good.
The funds, uh, for the Conservation Commission go into a, an account called the Greensboro Conservation Fund, which is appropriated by the Select Board. And the Conservation Commission, uh, makes recommendations to the Select Board. At the present time, we are working on a project to, um, At the present time, we are working on a project to have the trails, hiking trails in Greensboro that are open to the public, have them properly designed and maintained, and eventually put on the town website. Over the years, with, as I say, with appropriations from the Select Board, we have supported the road up our hill. We have given small contributions, usually in the order of $2,000, some conservation easements that have been executed in town. And now, of course, because climate change is on everybody's mind, we want to start looking into that area. So, it's a whole slew of activities. You can read our annual report in the town report and see what the money has been spent on. I should say, for 20 years, we were surviving on $2,000 a year. Now, we would like to raise that by 1,000 so we can do this work on public hiking trails and possibly do something about climate change. Larry, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. That was discussing the Conservation Commission appropriation of $3,000. We can come back to this if you need to. So, let's talk about the library, $40,000 contribution or appropriation. Jennifer?
I'm Jennifer Lucas. Jennifer Lucas, I'm a board member as well as the volunteer treasurer for the Greensboro Free Library. This is my first ever in the town region. So, thank you for allowing me to speak to libraries needs. Closer? Okay. As you can see in Paul's Town Report, H34, 4344, the Town Report, the Greensboro Free Library is a vibrant community asset, and by all measures, has increased its services tremendously, 44% from 2019 to the end of last year, 2022. For this year, we adopted a nearly balanced operating budget with the town's appropriation of $40,000. Payroll makes up the largest part of the budget. The increase requires actual is 6.6% in our attempt to keep up with inflation and bring salaries in line with other libraries in the region. Many of those libraries in the region, their employees, and many of our town employees receive benefits such as health and retirement, which we are not yet able to offer to employees. For 10 months of the year, we operate with a deficit until the ninth or 10th month, when the town appropriation arrives, and then again until 50% of our donations arrive the last week of December. It's a nail-biter. We literally do not know if we're going to be in the black until New Year's Eve. It was 5:00 p.m. on New Year's Eve that we finally got enough donations to be in the black. We greatly appreciate our generous donors, but we need a more stable funding source. We've been asked why we cannot use our assets in lieu of more towns supporting. About a third of our assets are the library property. This is a leasehold improvement. It's not the building. The town owns the building. Our endowments comprise another third. These are permanently restricted, but do contribute 4% a year to our unrestricted funds. The remaining one-third consists of temporarily restricted grant dollars, funds to pay liabilities, and unrestricted funds. We dip into our unrestricted funds for quarter to $50,000 a year to cover our 10 months of operating deficit. Not only do we use these funds as a cushion, we rely on them, it does the town, on its capital and the birth funds. We fund capital expenditures from them. We just spent $5,000 on a bathroom upgrade, and you can ask Mike about the wiring for it when you leave. And we've identified several large future needs such as parking and access. Last year, the town supported 29% of our budget. If we stayed at 29% for 2023, the appropriation would amount to $33,000, and we'd have a $7,000 deficit. From the Vermont Department of Libraries database, the average town support for libraries is 72%. We're asking the town to increase its support to us to 35%. Lastly, at the level of support we're requesting, the town tax burden on a $300,000 piece of property in Greensboro would be $48 a year. Crasberry voters tax themselves at twice that rate for their library at $98 a year on equivalent property. We hope you'll support the library's need for a $40,000 appropriation this year. Thank you.
Good. More discussion about the library? From anybody? There we are. Okay, we're back. Okay, the next one would be Greensboro Historical Society, $5,000. Who would like to address that? Yep. Who's back there? Okay, BJ. Coming to you, I think. There you go.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'd like to first of all say that the use of this microphone is excellent if you hold it very close to your mouth. The Greensboro Historical Society preserves your history, the history of your grandparents, your great-grandparents way, way back. Get involved. Come and get your stories, tales, recommendations, whatever, recorded, and they will be a permanent fixture at the Greensboro Historical Society. There is a very good write-up. Here. Here, which you can read, which tells where our funds go. A good deal of them go for technical information, recordings. We have someone that comes and works once a week, and she is very, very instrumental in keeping our files and whatever organized. Are there any other questions? Or Nancy, would you like to address something? Our previous president is here, Nancy Hill, and she might have something to say. Nancy, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, here she is. Nancy.
Thank you. We are an all-volunteer organization, except that's not quite true. It's not all volunteer because we do have to pay our archivist, who is recording, as they said, and we also pay for some tech support. Neither of these two people earn what they should be earning, but that's how we are spending our money in addition to the usual heat, electricity, that type of thing. So, we would be very happy. We thank all of you for your support and really happy to get $5,000 from the town. Thank you.
Okay. Greensboro, let's see, here we are. Caspian Lake Beach, $3,650. Okay, John? Louis, over here, John. Thank you.
I'm John Schweitzer. I'm the treasurer of the Caspian Lake Beach Association, or Committee. It's a committee. The committee is made up of three people from Hardwick and three people from Greensboro, Linda Shatney and Isla Hunt are the other two people from Greensboro. The beach, the beach is owned by Hardwick, and we share the use of the beach with them. Hardwick, our budget is $7,300 this year. Half of that comes from Hardwick. The other half comes from the voters of Greensboro, or the taxpayers of Greensboro, I should say. The big thing you should know is that we have over 10,000 visitor days a year at the beach. We are the most active recreation facility in the town. And if you've been around on a warm summer afternoon in July or August, you see most of those people there at the beach. So, the money we're asking for this year is just a slight increase. It's, we hired Adam Whitney to take over Earl's job as maintenance. The bulk of this money goes for the maintenance of the beach. That means daily emptying the trash, picking up the goose poop, mowing the lawn, and just cleaning it up in general. So, that's what the money's going for, and I think it's a good use.
Okay, is there a question right up here?
Thank you. I'm curious, does Hardwick share in those expenses for the...
Yeah.
Ah, 50/50. Okay, great, thank you.
Whatever it's spent, they pay half.
Hardwick shares the expenses 50/50. More questions for the beach? Okay. Greensboro Recreation Committee, $4,000. Who's involved in that one?
I don't need that much, Joe. No, I don't. I have a tremor. It's gonna make it difficult, but I'll do my best. I really don't need this. But the Recreation Committee this year has been involved in three major projects, the community park in the bend. Primary expense down there has been fencing for the basketball court. There's a lot more we'd like to do. We'd like to make more amenities for the children. There's been a lot of volunteer time that has gone into the gardening down there, cleaning it up and keeping it maintained. Secondly, we've tried our best to support the swimming program, especially for Greensboro children, and our hope is that our children in Greensboro will be able to have a summer program that doesn't cost them money so they can all learn to swim and learn from skilled professional instructors. We've worked a great deal to create and maintain a skating rink for the community. It's been a lot of work. We're very grateful to have been able to partner with the Highland Center here. They've provided the hydrant, the water hydrant. They've provided toilet facilities, in a sense, warming facilities as well. They've also helped us a great deal. The skating rink going forward is going to be a challenge. It's been very difficult this year because of the intermittent weather, but the swimming program, the community park, and the skating rink have been our primary focus. And going forward, we are doing our very best to create a skating rink that we can have greater dependability for. We would ideally like to have a sheltered skating rink, but that's going to involve more money than we can ask the town for. Thank you.
Okay. Want to discuss these more? BJ?
The Caspian Lake Cold Water Swimmers is a very small group, but very, very active. Get involved. It's not that bad.
Louis, over here. Ed?
I hope this is not out of order, but I would like to add an item to this list of appropriations.
No, you can't do that.
I can't do that?
Nope. We can discuss it under new business, but we can't take any binding information that was not previously warned. Sorry. Certainly bring it up. Okay, others? You ready for the question? Okay, the question is, as presented, shall the voters in town of Greensboro approve the following special appropriation requests from the municipal properties listed below? And if, you know, any one of these things, you can do a ballot vote if you want, but I'm not seeing seven voters that want to do such a thing. We'll go ahead and do a voice call. Greensboro Conservation Committee, or what is it? Commission, excuse me. $3,000. Greensboro Free Library, $40,000. Greensboro Historical Society, $5,000. Caspian Lake Beach Committee, $3,650. Greensboro Recreation Committee, $4,000. A total of $55,650. If you are in favor, as presented, please say aye. As opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 10, shall the Select Board have the ability to approve or disapprove the town zoning bylaw changes or refer town zoning bylaw changes for a post, for a vote at town meeting?
I move Article 10 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion as presented. Is there a second? Second by Ellen? Okay. Kent, you bring...
One or the other. No, but if you put an "or" in there, doesn't that make it sound like you're choosing to play these two?
Well, okay, hold on. Kent made the motion. He has the right to speak first, and then we can take more questions. Kent?
Yeah, hello, everybody.
Louis. Kent's over here. Yep, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Kent Hanson, Chairman of the Planning Commission here in town. The reason that I initiated Article 10 is to promote more efficiency when it comes to updating or initiating zoning bylaws here in town. For people who don't know, zoning bylaw changes only happen after your planning commission has heard the issue and had a public hearing, and the Select Board has heard the issue and had a public hearing, and both of them have approved the bylaw change or update. That's not changed by this article. However, unlike most towns in Vermont, Greensboro's bylaw change process requires a final step, an affirmative vote by the entire town at town meeting. This final step can add a full year to the approval process, and what Article 10, as presented, does is it gives the Select Board the option of approving or disapproving or forwarding the bylaw as they do now to the town for a vote. And what that does is it provides more efficiency if the Select Board decides a specific bylaw is administrative or minor in nature. I urge you to vote affirmatively on Article 10.
Okay, questions? Laura Lee, did you have something?
No, that answered it. Thank you.
Okay, Nomi? Remember, y'all can run like that.
So, as it stands now, isn't it that the town has to vote on it? It doesn't have to vote at town meeting?
It has to be an Australian ballot.
Back in 2005, the town voted to have bylaws voted by Australian ballot, and this is the change to that, but that's what it, you voted in 2005, to be Australian ballot, not town Australian ballot.
Which can take place at any time during the year.
Which can take place at any time, and it's a paper vote, obviously.
Okay. Well, then, I would just add, I think it's really important that we make it so that the town can vote because, as is clear, only a few people can show up to town meeting. There's a lot of people who can't, and so if they can't vote for the Select Board and they can't vote for any of the other things that we vote on here at town meeting, I think they should at least have a say in the final decision of what changes are made to a zoning bylaw. And if it can happen at any time in a year, then the year-long lag that Kent Hanson doesn't seem to apply.
Can I just remind people that part of the problem that's come up is if we have to make a correction to spelling, we would have to have a whole town vote on that. The way it is now.
Naomi, go ahead.
I mean, I would just argue, I think that ideally, we're reviewing things very, very carefully before putting them to a...
we're reviewing things very, very carefully before putting them to a vote. And I think that the flip side, even if it isn't a correction, the, you know, major changes can also take place without the town having the opportunity to vote on it. So I think it's worth having the town and everybody in it an opportunity.
I want to speak against this article. It doesn't say its only purpose is to correct a misspelling or a typo. What it does is it gives the Select Board alone, without the vote of the people, the right to change zoning bylaws. Those zoning bylaws, zoning has enormous consequences for every family here. And we need to be careful about it. The idea of democracy is not to be efficient, but to give people a voice. To take your voice away from you and give it to us is a huge mistake. I wouldn't let, I would encourage you not to do it.
So I was gonna speak in support of this, but not as written. I do believe that it needs to have additional clarification, because what Kent said is appropriate. I do think that what falls into the purview of the commissions, there have already been two opportunities to come to an open meeting. And then adding another vote to that, even if it is an Australian vote, can be very expensive. I mean, for the town to opt to do an off-cycle vote, this is something that we're all agreeing to pay for, so there is that concern. However, I do think that this is too much of a blanket statement, that it does allow for major changes to happen without a vote. So I would not agree with this as it stands.
Further comments? Oh, yep, Will?
I'm curious, do we know how expensive is it for the town to run an off-cycle Australian ballot?
An Australian ballot, if it was done a paper ballot as opposed to having it run by the tabulator, it would be two election officials being available, being paying the election officials for a full day. On salary, so I don't count. So it would be two. It, I don't believe it would be that expensive if we did not use the tabulator. Tabulator adds cost, obviously. But if it was just a paper vote, it would just be the employees there for, from ten to seven for elections.
Carol?
So you would not have to mail out a warning or do any printing for this or anything like that?
We would post the warning, yes. And we wouldn't necessarily have to mail it to all individuals. It would be posted like anything else, you know, on the website in the five or six different places around town. And, you know, putting maybe a forty-five dollar ad in the Gazette or whatever. But it's not overwhelming in a cost. Again, if it was a tabulator, then it's a whole different ballgame.
That's absentee?
I'm sorry, yes, absentee ballot. Anybody who would request the absentee ballot, so it would be, sorry about that, postage for, you know, whoever would request a ballot. And postage, obviously, is sixty, I'd say sixty-five cents for whoever would ask for that.
Kent?
What budget item, where would this money come from, Kent? I know the Planning Commission doesn't have, they don't have that money in our budget.
It would be in elections, I guess. And the payroll would be under, well, in elections as well.
Thank you. Jay, there we go. Name skip.
I am all the time, I'm a teacher, I have to remember two thousand of them. I was hoping that we could take the discussion a little bit out of the abstract and make it a little bit more real. Kent, I don't know, are you able to give us an actual example of where your hands are tied and what's been difficult? And why the inefficiency is such a problem? I guess I don't quite understand both sides of this yet enough to make a smart choice. Can you do that for us?
Thank you. Yeah, as Ellen mentioned, what's coming from the commission at times are new issues, things that require full vote, and I think full consideration possibly in the town. Other times, what's coming forward is that in review of existing bylaws, words were misplaced, distances have been changed. For instance, we're moving a change in the buffer zone on the shoreline protection district from one hundred feet to one hundred and fifty feet. So at times, they're really minor changes.
Minor, that's not minor.
Maybe Ellen can help me on other examples we've dealt with. But several times, it hasn't been a new concept. It's been redefinition or actually, as Ellen suggested, even some typos and some mistakes in previous bylaws that were made.
Yeah, I think the intent of this, and maybe as Carol said, it could be worded in a way that would be more specific, is that I've been involved in the Planning Commission for probably too many years. And just in the past two years, going over and over certain areas, we find that sometimes a section really belongs in another section. It would be more appropriate. So it's just moving a paragraph or, or sometimes, I'm not talking about changing. Changing buffer zones is a larger issue. But I'm, but just simply, literally wordsmithing so that things can be clarified and people can understand better. I mean, everybody, you know, it's written and then it becomes what it is. And then, and then there are legal cases because of a misunderstanding of the way the grammar was in a particular section. I mean, the town has had to pay legal costs because there's a minor change that could have been made that could have prevented that from happening. And, you know, my perspective was that when it is something that is grammatical, that doesn't change the larger intent, it would be something that would go through the regular process. And then the Select Board would still have the ability to decide. This doesn't change that. Then the Select Board would have the ability to decide whether it goes to a town meeting. I mean, so the purpose, and that's why I think this needs to be clarified. That doesn't get taken away. But if it's something like a grammatical change or moving a paragraph or changing a section, you know, that's something that, why would we need a whole town and spend money to do that? That's the point. So maybe there is a way to clarify this so that people understand that. But there's never been an intent that the Planning Commission would make changes without getting approval. It really is minor versus major.
Okay, Bill?
Thanks, Tim. Bill Rogers. I think the thing that would be extreme, that would, I think, required to get a lot more yes votes on this would be to make explicit criteria for what's major and what's minor. Because right now, we've had the suggestion that changing buffer zone sizes is really a minor change. Now, you might not agree with that, but there's nothing in that, in that proposal that prevents it from being treated as a minor change. So I think that you would get more yes votes if this were refined in a way that clarified clearly what is minor and what is major.
The way this is written, a three-person majority on the Select Board can change zoning from ten acres to twenty acres or five acres to ten acres. The impact that could have on you is enormous. I would urge you not to vote for this.
More discussion? Are you ready for the question? Larry? Would seven or more of you like a ballot vote? Raise your hands if you'd like a ballot vote. Got one, two? Is that it? Just two of you? Okay, so we'll get a voice vote. All in favor of this article, which is Article ten. Shall the Select Board have the ability to approve slash disapprove town zoning bylaw changes or refer town zoning bylaws changes for a vote at town meeting? If you are in favor, please say aye. If you are opposed, please say no. The noes appear to have it. Question? The noes do have it. You've defeated Article ten. Okay, Article eleven. Shall the voters approve the proposed budget in the amount of two million, one hundred and four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars, which contains the necessary amount required by law and proposed expenses for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and twenty-three? This budget amount contains the outside and local appropriation requests. So that's including both articles that we've already approved, correct? Does not include eighty-five? Okay, we'll get a, I think it does. It does not include salvation terms? Okay, can you give me a total? First of all, let's get a motion to accept Article eleven as written. By who? Wait, seconded by? Okay, by Stephanie. And then we're gonna have an amendment to change that number. And here's where you can start discussing the budget, which is in the town report. Any questions for the Select Board concerning their budget? Okay, but I'd like to get the number, so everybody knows exactly what you're asking.
My discussion is that I'd like to thank the town Select Board, who offered the powers to be for giving the cemetery commission more money this year. It's, it's, we have done, in my opinion, we have done yeoman work for the last X number of years of fixing the cemeteries, upgrading, actually, binding the cemeteries, framing the boundaries. So it's, it's with appreciation that we have gotten some more money to, it's like all town, or most all, or a lot of town projects. It's an endless pit. It's like having a car, you just keep fixing. And so it's, it's good to have, to have the appreciation from the town, and in particular, the town fathers, that acknowledgement that we're doing. And I'd like to, my, thank the other two members of the board, McNeil and probably most importantly, I think McNeil would agree with me, is Suvain Patson. She is the only person that gets paid a stipend, but she deserves to get a pay stipend. And personally, it would come out of my pocket. If I had to do that, I would gladly pay her to do what she does. So it's, and it's, I just wanted to thank the town. It just makes it easier to do projects. It's, and the three of us are pretty much in agreement. This is, we're here for the long haul. We're doing things that have been, in my view, neglected for a lot of years. And part of it came home when we had to literally find the village cemetery. We had to have it surveyed, and part of it twice, to get it totally cleared out of what is, what is the town's, the village cemetery's line limits. So it's just, anyways, it's just the acknowledgement that that we're in our position to be doing the right thing.
Further discussion on the Select Board's budget as proposed? Naomi?
Thank you for all the hard work. I know this budget is a lot, a lot of work. I guess I have a question in terms of more broad strokes. Even it came out in the Gazette this past week that our town budget is about double that of Crasberry's. And so I'm curious what is going on in terms of looking at restricting numbers or reducing expenses, because I feel like the numbers are going up and up and up. And we have a very generous community, which I love, but also I'm concerned because I know the people who it hits the hardest are oftentimes the people who can't show up to this town meeting. And I'd love to know where we could potentially sort of squeeze, especially in a time when expenses across the board are so high that just basic living things are really hard to do. So when our taxes are going up, I know that that impacts a lot of people. So I'd love to know just generally what we might be able to do, or what we could do there.
So we are influenced by the exact same factors you're talking about. And the budget, the numbers aren't just going up and up and up and up. If you read through there, it's relatively conservative. This year, we've had a fairly significant increase, but in previous years, no. And so I would suggest that talk to the board of what services you want to eliminate or what appropriations you want to eliminate. Well, and it's not the board's decision. It's this group's decision on appropriations. So there's no fluff. So it's up to you. If you want to cut some services or some appropriation, then make that known.
Is that Josh?
Yeah, on that note, I mean, driveway plowing and police services along is three to four hundred K? I don't know, but a huge amount of money. I'm not pro or against them, I'm just saying. Everything else is like cutting two thousand here, four thousand. I mean, it's, those are the two biggest things if you really want to make a difference in big-time money. I'd just add, Crasberry has, I believe, neither of those services.
Did everybody understand what Josh said? Joshua, could you?
Oh, the last thing, I believe, I don't know if Crasberry has any contract for policing, but I'm not sure that it's, they must get state police coverage on the side or not. Anyway, I'm just saying, compare Crasberry to Greensboro. Crasberry does not have the driveway plowing or the policing services. And that's a massive amount of money that they're, in effect, saving that we're spending.
George?
Years ago, one of the biggest cuts in the town budget would be getting rid of driveway plowings. When I was on the Select Board, we tried that, and I think it was at that time like sixteen for keeping driveway plowing and five for not. So that's a big cut if you wanted to probably add your own driveway plowings.
Okay, further discussion on the budget? Yep?
Hello, Eric Stevens. If my, if I'm understanding the budget right, if my math is right, about half of the increase over the previous year is the highway projects, paving and brands match. And so, you know, if we, if that were maintained, I think the six percent increase would be more like three percent. I think the 6% increase would be more like 3%. So I'm just wondering if somebody could explain more to more detail. I know there's a mention of it in the summary. But if someone could get into more detail about exactly where that, approximately 72,000 is being spent. And if it's something that could be deferred or really needs to be spent now.
Uh, the grants branch is for the rebuild of the Porterbrook Bridge. The town has a grant for 200,000 that it, um, it hopes to use this coming year. There will be a grants match for approximately 25,000. That's what that money is for. There's also a significant amount more for paving. Um, the select board decided that it was, um, prudent to raise that as well, too. Peter, do you want to speak more about the paving?
So in terms of deferring expenses like roads or something, you could save a little money, but you're gonna pay for it doubly in the future. The Crasberry, the Porterbrook Bridge, we've been told that we should not go any longer because there's a good opportunity for a, say, a fuel truck, which is, I think, the heaviest PSI ti, uh, wheels on the road to potentially, I mean, it's not imminent, but it could happen. And that bridge, it costs, is way exceeded what we thought it was gonna cost. We don't have much choice. Um, we have a grant and we're hoping to get potentially another small grant to put into that. And we're gonna probably use some ARBA funds and some of the, um... Fund balance, which we have to pay for things like that. As far as paving, it's just the price is going up astronomically. We could unpave some roads if people want to go back to gravel. Or we could turn, let them turn into potholes. That's up to you guys. If that's what you want, let us know. But I don't think deferring maintenance is gonna save us in the long run. It's gonna cost us a lot.
I, I was just gonna say, I think the road crew has been phenomenal in terms of ditching. We have some pretty deep ditches, but, um, I think in terms of climate change, I think we are thinking about getting ready for, you know, these huge storms that come that are so different from the past and dealing with the runoff. And, you know, there's a lot to think about for the roads. And if you don't have roads, then you can't, emergency can't get in and out. And, you know, so I think we're, even though we may spend more than Crasberry, I don't know what they spend, but, um, I'm impressed by our roads. And I live on a dirt one.
Further discussion on the town budget. Ready for the question? What, Mike?
Has this been amended to include Article 7 and 8 yet?
Well, I was, uh, sort of stood corrected here. We have already passed Article 7 and 8. And for your information, I will give you what the bottom line will be. But we're, what we're voting on is the budget as presented. Seven or more like a ballot vote? Anybody? Voice vote will be. So, um, the bottom line will be $2,105,646. But the article as presented, which we'll vote on because you've already approved the extra money from Article 7 and 8. So the article is, "Shall the voters approve the proposed budget in the amount of $2,104,396, which contains the necessary amount required by law and proposed expenses for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023? This budget amount includes the outside and local appropriation requests." All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Good discussion, but the ayes appear to have it. It has passed. Article 12, "Shall the voters approve transferring the surplus, if any, from the current fiscal year 2023 Highway Fund into the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, also called the HERF, in the next fiscal year 2024?" Motion? Moved by Kim, seconded by? Mike, okay. Discussion? No? Ready for the question? All in favor of Article 12, "Shall the voters approve the transferring of the surplus, if any, from the current fiscal year 2023 Highway Fund into the Equipment, Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, HERF, in the next fiscal year 2024?" All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. You've passed it. Okay, Article 13, "Shall the voters of the town of Greensboro approve having the town treasurer serve as a collector of current taxes and set the tax due date of November 2nd, 2023? Taxes will be delinquent if not received in the office of the town treasurer by Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 by 4:00 PM." Motion? Moved by Kim, seconded by Cheryl. Discussion? Any words of wisdom on this? Okay. Okay, all in, uh, oh, you do have one. Good. Janet?
We have a wobbling due date for taxes, which must confuse the people. And it was all established because I am the delinquent tax collector and I worked on Friday. And Bridget didn't want to have anything to do with somebody that came in on Friday morning with their late taxes. So she made Thursday. And it varies every year. I mean, it doesn't bother me, but there's some people that it might, just saying.
So did you all notice that Janet just referred to herself as a delinquent tax collector? I've been very, I've been very careful over the years to not say that. Okay, I'm so... Where are we? 13, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. "Shall the voters of the town of Greensboro approve having the town treasurer serve as the collector of current taxes and set the tax due date of November 2nd, 2023? Taxes will be delinquent if not received in the office of the town treasurer by Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 at 4:00 PM." All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The ayes have it. You've passed it. Okay, Article 14, "To transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting, no binding business can be done." But, um, yeah, you had something, right?
I did, but I don't know who you want.
The biggest discussion we usually have is when is the 4th of July gonna be here? Um, so I am suggesting Saturday, July 1, because the 4th is in the middle of the week. Uh, your discussion?
Yep, the greatest question is, when is the 4th of July in Greensboro? John? Hey, Catherine's here. Hi, Catherine.
Hey.
The big question. Um, I kind of, I can't mind opposed to that because a lot of people come in town on Saturdays for the week. And I think a Sunday or Monday would be a better day. Or even the 4th of July. We could have it on the 4th of July.
Your choice.
Anybody else want to talk about when the 4th of July is gonna be this year? Um, Judy?
I just want to remind people, one reason we did not have it on the 4th is because Brett and Puppet Theater and their band is not available. They are committed to Cabot and Barton on the 4th. And so traditionally, we wear the funky 4th and picked a different day because basically they're the only real band that's available.
Lina?
Hello, is it on? Okay, um, I... I would like to propose that Monday, for whatever of July, would be a wonderful time to have it. The 3rd? The 3rd, the 3rd of July.
So we've got three days now.
You can do a three-day holiday.
Let me look at my calendar. Okay, Mavis?
I just wonder if there might be people working on Monday? I guess people work on Saturday, too, but it's a Monday holiday. Okay, so maybe that's not a consideration. Thanks, Liz.
Okay, just for clarification, the 4th of July actually is on a Tuesday this year, which means that, um... Yeah, so the 1st of July is on Saturday, the 2nd is on Sunday, the 3rd is on a Monday. Janet?
For those of you who don't know, July 3rd is Andy Dale's funeral and the celebration of life for both, both Andy and Judy. That'll be the whole town's...
That's on the 3rd? 3rd, okay. Stephanie and then Lina, they're both over here, Liz. This is important stuff.
I appreciate the discussion, but I have never noticed that we had, too few people attending the parade. I had, I had no idea about Judy and Andy. I take my, my suggestion back.
Okay, round two straw vote. Whoa, yeah, we'll get to Catherine, you're gonna be next. This is very important stuff. Anybody else want to talk about the 4th of July? July 8th? No, hasn't been, I don't know. Right.
The parade is the same day as the 4th of, whenever day we pick, is that the same? And the fireworks and everything else, is that all the same, that? Because having gone to the, the parade is Brett and Puppet. And by other, if you can see the fire engines, if you want to go up and visit. But Brett and Puppet and the band coming down through Main Street is, that makes, that makes the 4th of July for a lot of people, I think. And I think a lot, you know, it's, in years past, the streets are packed with the parade coming down through. So I think whenever Brett and Puppet fit, uh, work it in, that's when we should do it.
Okay, so let's do a straw vote. How's that? And, um... Let's say, how many would like it to be on the 4th of July? A couple? Yep, that's, that's, that's probably, yeah, I got, I got about three, three or four. How many would like it to be on the 3rd of July? Which is a Monday. How many would like it to be on Sunday, the 2nd of July? Okay, well, we're getting, we're getting there. How many would like it to be on Saturday, the 1st of July? Well, in my humble opinion, I think that the 1st has it. What do you think? Everybody agreeing, looking around? I don't know. Okay, so I think we, we've made an unofficial decision that the 4th of July will be on the 1st. All right? So, here comes Catherine Sims, our representative.
Sorry, Catherine. I mean, just one second. Uh, I just wanted to thank, um, Tracy for being, serving on the select board. She's not here, as I said earlier, and she's not running. But she is a great voice and, um, we all really appreciated her perspective. Thanks.
What a venue, woo! Um, that was fun to watch, democracy in action. Um, I don't really care when it is, I'm coming whatever day it is because the funky 4th is the best. Um, and I recognize that I'm now probably standing in the way of you and a journey. So I will try to keep this brief. Um, but really, I appreciate the opportunity to check in with you all and just provide a quick update about some of the things that are moving in the State House. So believe it or not, we are already like halfway through the 2023 legislative session. I don't know where the time has gone. Um, this year, we were able to start in person, which felt really great to be doing the work in the Capitol dome. We have tons of new members, over 50 new, um, members, uh, in the House of Representatives. So lots of new faces, great energy, more young people, more parents, more diversity. Um, it feels great to be there doing this work. This year, I am serving on Ways and Means, one of the two money committees. And so that's a great opportunity to have a kind of high-level view of a lot of the bills that are moving and influence a lot of important policy. I'm also serving as one of the co-chairs of the Rural Caucus, which is a tripartisan group of legislators from rural communities banding together to advocate for what matters for our communities. Um, we are still in a time of great surplus thanks to the federal stimulus and an increase in state revenues as a result of that stimulus. That said, we are kind of coming to the end of the COVID federal stimulus era. So we are trying hard to focus on using these one-time funds to make one-time transformational investments to support a vibrant future for Vermont and focusing on funding our programs in a way that's fiscally responsible and sustainable long-term. A number of big issues on the plate this year, including childcare, housing, paid family and medical leave, school construction, workforce development. Um, the, the list really goes on. One thing that I've heard from many of you on already is S5, the Affordable Heat Act, which is, um, Clean Heat Standard kind of reboot 2.0 from last session. And this bill seeks to address the fact that a third of the emissions that we generate here in Vermont come from how we heat our homes and buildings. And the Clean Heat Standard would create a market-driven approach to helping folks shift off fossil fuels onto more price-stable, less volatile, um, ways of, of heating our homes. Um, I certainly understand the need for this important, um, climate change legislation. And at the same time, certainly have some concerns around what will be the impacts on low and moderate income Vermonters, on our small fuel dealers and our electrical grid. So as this bill moves forward, I'll be asking a lot of questions and working hard to improve the bill. It just passed out of the Senate on a 1910 vote, where Senate Appropriations added an amendment to the bill which would, um, which adds a checkback provision, which has the Public Utility Commission, um, designing the Clean Heat Standard and studying the costs. And then that report will come back to the legislature in 2025, where the legislature would have to take an affirmative vote, pass a bill, um, put into law, um, the implementation of the standard. And so I think that idea of fully framing this is, let's take more time to flesh out and design it, understand the cost impacts, um, before, um, implementing the Clean Heat Standard. Um, is, is something that makes sense to me. Um, again, it's coming over to the House, there'll be lots more conversation. Um, and I'll be thinking about not only how do we work to reduce our emissions, but how are we also centering resiliency and adaptation in this moment? Um, as our weather patterns change, like that's here now and it's gonna continue to increase. And want to make sure that all of our communities are resilient in the face of climate change and make sure that we're investing and prioritizing that as well as emissions reductions. Um, as with any bill, I will thoroughly study the final language before, before voting on it. Um, just a few other things that I've been working really hard on outside of committee that I want to flag for you, and that's housing, emergency medical services, and the right to repair. So, uh, hearing from many of you on the campaign trail about how we're in a housing crisis and we need to do more to address it. I were, um, I was the lead sponsor on H111 with over 50 cosponsors in the House to make strategic investments in creating more low and middle-income housing, um, modernizing Act 250 to reduce regulatory barriers to housing development in our Villa Centers and downtowns, and adding capacity at the local and regional level to help move, um, housing projects forward. to help move housing projects forward. Much of that bill was incorporated into S100, the Omnibus Housing Bill that just passed out of Senate Economic Development and is now in Senate Natural Resources. So really excited to see, you know, impactful work on housing moving forward this session. Thanks to lots of conversations with Tim and others. I have been trying hard to learn about our emergency medical services. I think when we call 911, we all expect an ambulance to be able to come to our aid if we need it. And unfortunately, because of underfunding in the system and some other systemic challenges, it's getting harder and harder for crews to do their work to serve the needs of Vermonters. We're seeing high turnover in EMS right now. And so working with a bunch of other legislators introduced a bill to stabilize our EMS system by addressing some of the funding challenges, looking at regional coordination and addressing some of the workforce challenges. Lastly, flag for you a right-to-repair agricultural equipment bill. I believe that if you own something, you should have a right to fix it. And so working with over 30 cosponsors introduced a bill that would require original manufacturer, equipment manufacturers of agricultural equipment to provide equal access to consumers and independent repair shops, all of the stuff that you need to fix stuff, whether it's diagnostic materials, manuals, service parts, firm and software, so that if you own it, you can fix it. And I'll be walking the House Agriculture Committee through that bill next week and expect them to take it up and hopefully pass it out before crossover. So that's just like a brief sampling of, you know, some of, all of the work that we're doing in the State House this year. We still have a long ways to go before adjournment in May, but I'm staying focused on passing a fiscally responsible, balanced state budget and making sure that the rural perspective is at the table as we take up these important issues. And I need your help to do that work. So so grateful for folks who have already reached out to me. If you haven't, I encourage you to check out my website where you can find ways to contact me, including signing up for my monthly office hours that I hold virtually, but always happy to jump on the phone or answer a text or talk more with you about what matters to you. I did bring a stack of physical copies of a town meeting report that goes into more depth on some of the things that I've talked about and some other things that I haven't mentioned. It is an honor to serve you. I really enjoy this work and hearing from you helps me do that work better. So, uh, thank you and if you're not too hungry, happy to answer some more questions or talk individually with folks. Thanks again. Appreciate that.
Now for my stand-up. Questions for Catherine? Erica?
Does the Legislature have any, uh, does the Legislature have any impact, what would we say, about wake boats? We're sort of interested in that topic here.
Yeah, thanks. Just heard a lot about that in Glover, um, town meeting. I'm doing, I'm doing the circuit, Albany, Glover, Greensboro, when the Craft Spry next. So wake boats. And for folks who aren't familiar, these are not just like your average motorized boat. It's like big behemoths that are like designed to create enormous wakes that I guess you jump over or on or around. And there are more and more of them. And we have a lot of really incredible lakes up here in our region. Caspian being, you know, one of many that have really great water quality. And there are some current concerns about these boats. Not only the impact they might have on other users of the lake, if you're swimming, if you're kayaking, paddle boarding, like what would passing by one of these big boats with a huge wake be like? And also that the big waves might have negative impact on shoreline erosion. They stir up the sediment in the lake. And they also have bilges that can't be fully drained. And so there's, which might mean, you know, zebra mussels or milfoil or other aquatic invasive species being brought to our lake. And so the Department of Environmental Conservation is in the middle of a rule-making process around the use of these boats on lakes. And their draft rule determined a certain number of lakes that would be eligible to host wake boats and there would be a certain area of the lake that would be available for wake boating, a 500-foot buffer from the edge of the lake. And I was here the other night when the public hearing happened and, you know, heard from person after person, real concern about these boats on our lakes and asking at least for a thousand-foot minimum from shoreline. Hearing the concern, I actually introduced a bill this year that would allow communities to opt into a wake boat ban. You know, my preference is to let communities make the decision that's right for them. It's sitting on the wall of House Transportation and haven't heard any indication that they will take that up. But I think once we see the final rule from DEC, that may create more impetus to really push for communities to make the choice that's right for them so that we can preserve and protect our really pristine, high-quality lakes here in this region. So thanks for flagging that, certainly watching that closely. Do you want to use a microphone once you're done?
Yeah, um, so in terms of the kinds of legislation that would make more housing available in small rural towns, places like Barton, you know, Glover, Greensboro, et cetera, what's going on in the House and the Senate to do that?
Yeah, thanks for flagging that. I think, I mean, first shout out to Rural Edge, doing really incredible work, Patrick and his team, to provide great housing opportunities for our region. And we know that there's a four-year waiting list often to get into one of the Rural Edge apartments and that many folks may not qualify for those housing units and really struggle to compete with the all-cash offers, you know, above asking with no inspections for houses that have doubled in price over the last few years, that, you know, it's really hard to find units. And we want to, I want to make sure that the Legislature addresses this issue in a way that works for all communities, not just, you know, Chittingen County where large shared developments are the right fit. They're, addressing the housing crisis looks different in different communities. And so in the bill that I've been working on and in advocacy in the Senate, worked hard to add language that provides for a variety of solutions. So that when we're standing up pots of money, like the missing middle homeownership program that already exists, the draft bill adds language to ensure that we are allowing for projects of different sizes and scale. So it's not all just the money goes to the biggest projects that would create the most units, because we don't need 50-unit housing projects here. I think we need sometimes six units and nine units. And that some of our existing funding sources aren't really, haven't been well-suited to competitively funding projects from smaller communities. So I added language to make sure that the criteria worked for a variety of sizes and in fact gave bonus points for underserved communities, like many of ours, that struggle to build forward housing projects. The bill also looks to continue the VHIP, the Vermont Home Improvement Program. If folks aren't aware of that, I want to make sure that you do it. It's been piloted over the last few years and we're looking to make it permanent and continue funding this program that provides grants to landlords and individuals to bring non-cool compliant apartment units back online or to add accessory dwelling units. So if you have a garage that, you know, could, you could turn into an apartment, this program provides grant funding to use existing structures to add more units, which I think is a great solution for sort of small rural communities. We've seen Essex County actually take advantage of that program. It's the only ARPA dollars that that whole county has been able to access so far. So that's a program that I've heard is working and have been pushing for continuing to expand and extend that program. The last thing I'll mention is the bill contemplates a new program, a rental revolving loan program. And so this would be a new tool for VHFA to provide low-cost capital to private developers to build projects that otherwise might really struggle to pencil out, which is something I heard from a lot of developers. They have smart infill development in our village centers that they want to do, but, you know, it doesn't always pencil out here where we have, you know, limited water and sewer infrastructure, you know, a lower market rate that makes it harder to have a return on investment. So this program would add low-cost capital to projects to help them move forward that might not otherwise. And again, with criteria in the grant program to make sure that we're reaching every community in a variety of sizes and scale projects. So just some of the ways they've been trying to advocate to make sure that we're addressing housing in a way that works for a small, small town from our own two.
Back to the wake boats. Would you tell us again, please, which committee has the town wake boat choice option on the wall?
Yeah, so I don't know off the top of my head what the number of that wake boat ban bill is, but I'm looking at some of our...
It's like 86 or 84.
Yeah. And you can always go to my page on the website and scroll down through all the bills that I've introduced. But, um, so the wake boat, the bill that would allow communities to opt in to a wake boat ban is sitting on the wall of House Transportation. And so if folks are motivated to advocate on this issue, you might consider emailing the Chair or other members of that committee saying, you know, "We strongly support this bill. Here's why, and we really hope you'll take it up and take action." You know, we're a citizen legislature, and let me tell you, if I did emails on the bill, it causes me to, you know, dig in and learn more. And so your voice does really matter. And if anyone is interested in testifying on this or other bills, please don't hesitate to reach out. You know, we hear from whoever wants to come speak to us on a bill that matters to them.
Could I just add a word on the wake boat issue? We have a working group here in town, and whether it's a cursing or a blessing, I don't know, a blessing or a curse, but we have more lawyers per square inch than Washington, DC. And we're all working on a petition. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this worked. Does this not work? And so Stu Arnold, Joanne Hanowski, myself, Richie Berger, Bob Fairbanks, are all working on a petition to the Department of Environmental Conservation to address the issue of wake boats and to try to ban them on Caspian to get an exemption from the rule. Like all petitions, we can't predict the outcome. We hope Catherine will continue to work in the Legislature. There is also a statute in Vermont that lets municipalities petition to be authorized to regulate and control waters within the municipality, and I'm sure the Select Board will be talking about that. Ann Stevens is keeping track of an information email list. And so if you are interested in being kept abreast of exactly what's going on, give your email address to Ann. For now, our best hope is the petition to the Department of Environmental Conservation, and Richie Berger's law firm is working on that. And we will continue to work on it, Joanne, Stu, Bob, myself, Richie. And it'll be a lot of work and no guarantees. So I hope Catherine's going to continue to work on this issue as well.
Yeah, these guys have done an awesome job organizing and advocating. It was great to be at the public hearing and see person after person with really compelling testimony on the topic. So you've got great advocates around the room on this issue.
All right, Cliff?
What are the chances that the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board will get the appropriation that was originally authorized for it 20 years ago?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is such an important kind of public-private partnership that does work to support affordable housing in our communities, a key source of funding for Rural Edge, and really good at leveraging federal match as well. And they're also a partner who helps conserve a lot of the land in Vermont. And in statute, they're obligated to get a certain amount of the property transfer tax revenue every year and every, the Legislature has a long history of notwithstanding that statute and giving them less than their statutory requirement. My understanding is that the Committees of Jurisdiction this year in their letters to the House Appropriations Committee did recommend full funding for VHDB. There's also significant funding for VHDB in S100, the housing bill. And we are also recommending, the committees are recommending that we fully fund the municipal planning fund, which supports our regional planning commissions, regional development commissions, and the municipal planning grants, another area where we have not listed the PTT year after year and underfunded these critical organizations who do important work in our communities. So thank you for flagging that and certainly a strong advocate for fully funding VHDB for all the important good they do in our communities.
Other questions for Catherine?
Again, don't hesitate to reach out, you know, phone, email, text. It helps me to hear what's on your mind and what matters to you. And thanks again for the opportunity to serve immobile on your behalf.
Okay, I got a question. I got a question for everybody. Not on. How do you turn that off?
Did that kill the meeting?
Tim and Catherine, there should be a red button at the bottom. Catherine, there's a red button at the bottom. Push it in and hold it in.
Okay, so my question to everybody is, what do you think about the nine o'clock starting time? Historically, I think the 10 o'clock was so that George Young could get his chores done before he gave him time. But George isn't doing chores these days and Larry isn't either. So I think we've set a new time for the town meeting. Any other things to bring up on your new business or last article? Yep, Larry?
In the town report, they briefly touched on reappraisal for town.
Go over again. Thank you.
In the town report, they touched briefly, there's going to be a reappraisal coming up soon. And I wonder if maybe Kim could give us a little bit of information on when and how close we are to it.
Our batteries are dead, so I'm gonna holler. There you go.
One second.
Trying to put batteries in.
Kim, can you turn on the light that's in front of you? I was told before it was dead.
Here we go. Oh, okay, we're working, we are working now. There we go.
So with the COVID, you know, the property values are changing rapidly. Right now, we were told that we were slated to have a reappraisal, but there's like probably 75% of the towns in the state of Vermont are in that same boat. And there's probably a handful of appraisers that, or outside appraisers that can do that job. So I don't expect it probably for the, probably two to three years. But we've got to get in line. I know a lot of people are in more shape than Greensboro or other towns, but it won't be this year. And when it does start, it takes about a year to complete. If you remember, the last one was 2010. So it'll be a while. We do have a new assessor though. Thank you to Brittany. So with the death of Sterns, we have a new assessor, and so things are changing. But yes, we do have, coming up, probably three to four years is what my best guess is from contractors right now.
Anything else? Oh, yes, we do. We've got Jennifer and we, there's somebody behind a mask. There we go.
Hi, my name is Anna Kula and I'm the Town Energy Coordinator. And I just wanted to let you know that we're going to be making window inserts this year. And so if you know anybody with leaky windows who'd love to save some money and be more comfortable in their home, they can sign up now. And we'll measure in the next couple weeks and then we'll build the window inserts at the Craft Spry Outdoor Center in the fall. So if you want to sign up, come and find me right after this meeting. And please spread the word and hopefully we'll get more people sign up. Thanks.
Good. Jennifer?
Kim, do you know what our CLA might be? Given the tax, given the property values are rising, even though our appraisal's not going to happen for two years?
Our CLA right now, it is 80%. It went from 91 to 80 with the slight change of all the values of sales going around. The requirement for reappraisal was 85%, and so we're down. But there's a lot of them that are in the 70s, so we are, we are down.
So that's going to affect not our municipal tax, but our education?
Education tax, but I have heard grumblings and I'm not sure for sure. But, you know, because everybody in the state basically is in the same boat. Before, if we were below the 85%, the state would instill a penalty for that until we got to be 100%. But I think because everybody in the state... But I think because everybody in the state is that, they are maybe rethinking that penalty, but that is all state and Department of Education, so we just kind of wait to hear. Thanks.
Anything else? Yes. Catherine?
We've heard several people mention that there are community members that are not able to attend town meeting on a Tuesday during the week. There's never a perfect time, but I would encourage the Select Board to consider moving town meeting to a Saturday, where we might capture some of the younger working folks and give them an opportunity for voice. Tradition is important, town meeting is important, and being able to be in person to voice your concerns, your, your views on what's happening in your community, we're really eliminating a large percentage of our small community. And so I would encourage you to look at a different day and time. There are other communities in the state that have done this, and greater participation builds, greater community vibrancy. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else to come up under this last non-binding article? Mary?
Thank you to everybody. I'm, I'm always just about overwhelmed with the paid people, the volunteer people, the people that you never hear from who give gifts to their neighbors and help somebody out and pull them out of a ditch. It's just a, it's a great place to live. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, we done? Is that it? Motion to adjourn? Seconded? Neither amendable or debatable, all in favor will say aye. As opposed, none. See you next year.